I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will ask our clerk to establish the forum of the board, please.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Chairman Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
President.
Thank you for that, and all members are present tonight. We do have the agenda that was published last week. We do have a need to amend this agenda tonight. We, under our resolutions there, under Resolution Number 54, if you would add Resolution R-055-22, and this is the resolution for our local option sales tax that we've been working on and negotiating with our cities. So we'll add that in as our last resolution tonight, and we'll read that as that time comes. So to my knowledge, that's the only modification or amendment to the agenda. Is there anything else we need to amend the agenda on?
No, sir.
Okay, so I will ask that we have a motion to accept the agenda with a one modification by adding Resolution R-55-22.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved with the one amendment. Okay, we do have our, in our packet, and this packet information is on our website for those at home watching, or anyone that's here tonight, we do have packets there on the back table. You're welcome to get a packet so you can follow along with us. But we do have our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting back on December the 8th, 2022, at 7:00 here at this facility. So the minutes have been prepared. Is there any corrections, concerns, or issues of the board of these minutes?
No, sir.
All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes that have been prepared?
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as prepared. Okay, at this time of our meeting, we do ask anyone that wants to come forward that has any public comments or that would like to address the board, we do ask you to limit your comments to five minutes, and we prefer that you limit your comments to things that we can have an impact on here in the county. So is there anyone that would like to speak on a topic tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move forward on our agenda. Okay, the next item that we have on our agenda is a proclamation of a service appreciation and honor our state Senator Jeff Mullis. Unfortunately, Senator Mullis was not able to be with us tonight. He, being the holiday season, he shared with me yesterday that he had a prior engagement with his extended family, that he'd been playing for some time, so he expressed his gratitude for this proclamation, but just wanted to apologize to everyone for not being able to be here to receive this in person, so I'll be getting him this at a later day. Proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, appreciation for the honorable Senator Jeff Mullis. Whereas Senator Jeff Mullis has served citizens of Walker County for four decades, holding positions with the Walker County Fire Department, excuse me, the Walker County Fire Rescue, the City of Chickamauga, and the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. Whereas, over the past 22 years in the Georgia State Senate, he has dedicated his time and talent to the betterment of Northwest Georgia by helping secure hundreds of millions of dollars in grants and public infrastructure investment for projects including McLemore, Roper, and Audia. And whereas his lawmakers, lawmaker Senator Mullis secured passage of a Monument Protection Act, prohibited local governments from mandating the COVID vaccine, and banned the state from awarding public contracts to oppressive regimes such as Russia. And whereas, he has also served as the voice on legislation addressing illegal immigration, transportation, tourism, first responders, abortion, taxes, and gun rights. And whereas, the Georgia chapter of the Recording Academy named Senator Mullis a champion of music for his work to promote the growth and success of the music industry and music tourist, tourism, which includes passage of the Georgia Music Investment Act, incentivizing recording and scoring, scoring projects in Georgia, as well as live tours that rehearse and start in the state. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and congratulate the honorable Senator Jeff Mullis for his distinguished service, and urge all citizens to extend their appreciation to Senator Mullis, who served, his service has left a lasting impression on Walker County and the state of Georgia, signed and sealed the 22nd day of December 2022. So thank you, Senator Mullis, for your 22 years of public service, and we appreciate all that you've done in securing funding and grants for Walker County. He was also a big help to us in securing grants for our broadband and also our water and sewer infrastructure just this year. So we move on to our next item. We will have a presentation on our next resolution, but before we discuss the resolution, I would like for Noel Durant with the Trust of Public Land, if he would come forward to the podium, and he's going to talk about and share with us what the Trust of Public Land is about and what we're hoping to get accomplished, so.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm Noel Durant, Tennessee State Director for the Trust for Public Land, also Walker County resident, and Trust for Public Land is a national conservation organization. We're nonprofit, we create parks and protect land for people, we work to ensure healthy and livable communities for generations to come. We're entering into our 50th year as an organization. We've been working in the Tennessee Valley for almost 30 years, for 28 years, and we have been helping protect and create some of the most iconic open spaces and trails in the region. Think of the Tennessee River Park, we helped negotiate the public access for that corridor, protecting Stringer's Ridge adjacent to downtown Chattanooga. We've helped protect parts of Moccasen Bend through the National Park Service, as well as developing the 12-mile South Chickamauga Creek Greenway that puts 35,000 residents within a mile of that trail corridor, many of whom lacked park access prior to the development of that trail. And our work relies on partnerships. We don't do our work alone, we have to work alongside a landowner, we have to work alongside private business, work alongside philanthropy, and municipalities to support the work that we can enable communities to complete, and it requires the right mixture to create projects that deliver close-to-home outdoor access, and that can really improve a community's quality of life. The Battlefield Connector Project has that right mixture. We have a community that's asking for better access to one of our region's most desirable recreation amenities in the National Battlefield. We have philanthropies willing to support the work, we have landowners that see the benefit of this trail corridor, and we actually have some members of the business community from City of Chickamauga here tonight to share their support for this project. And we have regional partners who see the impact of completing this project. So over the last six months, the Trust for Public Land has worked quietly to understand where are the opportunities for us to be supportive of this trail effort that's been underway for some time, and we've been working alongside county and City of Chickamauga staff to evaluate how we can proceed. And we've identified that Appalachian Regional Commission funding would be an excellent source of resources to complete the trail section from downtown Chickamauga to the Highway 27 underpass, and we are viewing this project in an estimated of three-quarters of a million dollars as our total project budget. In conversations with our Department of Community Affairs staff who manage our ARC process, they've been supportive of the application, they've, the investments they've made on the north side of the park, they view this as being complimentary, and they are encouraging an application to be submitted, and we've been working on securing private funds to support this application as well. In addition to what we were requesting from Walker County, we have commitments from two private foundations currently for a total of $100,000 of private funding in hand. We've been working really closely with the City of Chickamauga for additional municipal support, and right now, we think our remaining to be raised amount to meet the one-to-one match is around $175,000. Trust for Public Land has a really strong track record of fundraising for trails in the region. We've raised, gosh, millions of dollars for public assets, and we feel confident that we can find the right philanthropic partners to close that matching gap. And as we think about our next steps here, if the county commission sees this project as something that's worthwhile to invest in, the proposed $50,000 commitment, if we're successful in receiving the Appalachian Regional Commission dollars, that would result in a $750,000 capital improvement for Walker County, connecting one of the key cities within the county to an amazing asset. And we've heard from the National Park Service that they're supportive of greater community access to the battlefield, they're willing to write a letter of support to be included in the grant process, the grant proposal. So I think we've got a really strong opportunity to advance the Battlefield Connector and advance close-to-home access to the outdoors in Walker County. So we think about our next steps, we are working right now to engage the engineering firm who's been working on this project in the past. We're going to be working on hosting some public meetings to learn more about, and share about timeline for this process, and we'll work with the county as well as the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. As we look at the application process, we'll submit a pre-application to the state, and then work with Julianne, Samantha, and Joseph, and Alex at the Regional Commission to submit the full application later in 2023, probably April or June deadlines, and knowing that we'll hear back on our decision probably August is our guess for when we'll know on the funding. And in that process, as we, next steps for us with Walker County would be working with y'all on an entry license, so that Trust for Public Land can be conducting engineering work, can be hiring, contracting for folks to be both planning and ideally, if we are successful in receiving the Appalachian Regional Commission funding, actually completing the trail, constructing the trail on behalf of Walker County on the Osburn Road right-of-way. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have about Trust for Public Land or the Battlefield Connector.
Let me just add one additional thing. For those of you that may not be familiar with where exactly we're talking about, but you mentioned, Durant mentioned the Chickamauga National Battlefield. On Wilder Road, which enters into the south side of the battlefield, there is an existing trail project that was done a few years ago that the City of Chickamauga and the county and the Lynn Hurst Foundation was involved in that started a, we'll call it a trailhead there at the park, and goes in under the overpass of Highway 27 bypass. And so it snakes around and goes in under a bypass, so that way people on foot or bikes or whatever don't have to cross Highway 27 on a four-lane divided highway, they're actually able to go under it, and that's a finished asphalt path, and it ends over on Osburn Street, I think it is, and that's where the funding carried that project to. So this next phase would be to pick it up from that point and then go down south on Osburn Road in the existing right-of-way, all the way down to the City of Chickamauga, to the city limits, and connect into some new sidewalks that they have there, and this would really connect Chickamauga Battlefield to downtown Chickamauga as a walkable, bikeable path. So this is a phenomenal opportunity, because as Durant mentioned, we're looking at about a three-quarters of a million-dollar project, and so the ask of the county is access to the right-of-way to be able to do this, and then $50,000 in cash contribution, so we can invest $50,000 and come out with a three-quarters of a million, $750,000 project. So also, to my understanding, and there's representative here from the City of Chickamauga as well, that Chickamauga's committed also to a $50,000 commitment as well, and then you've talked about, you know, additional private donors and all that are sitting ready and excited about this, so.
They are. I have a grant contract that is, as soon as I leave this meeting, it'll be in my inbox.
So any additional questions, comments, anybody on the board?
I think the city's done, City of Chickamauga's done a great job with getting that started as well as the National Park Service, and I think I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion that we grant this $50,000 match and get this thing moving forward.
Okay. So, any last questions for Mr. Durant? All right, thank you, did a great job, great presentation.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate the business merchants and all from the City of Chickamauga being here tonight to support this and coming out in the cold and the rain, so it really shows y'all's dedication, and we really do appreciate y'all being here to support this in person, so thank you very much. Okay, so let me read this resolution so everybody at home will know exactly what we're talking about. Resolution R-49-22, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to allocate funds in support of the Chickamauga Battlefield Multi-Use Connector Trail. Whereas, the Trust for Public Land, TPL, has been exploring the feasibility of completing the Chickamauga Battlefield Multi-Use Connector Trail from the Chickamauga city limits to exiting path under Highway 27, excuse me, existing pathway under Highway 27 to Wilder Road and the battlefield. And whereas, nearly one-mile section of the proposed trail would be located in the unincorporated Walker County. And whereas, TPL has secured $50,000 in private donations for the trails that requires a $50,000 match from Walker County and a $50,000 match from the City of Chickamauga before the end of the year. And whereas, TPL proposes to raise an additional $225,000 through private donors and foundations to help secure a $375,000 Appalachian Regional Commission grant for the trail. And whereas, TPL has a proven track record of performance developing trails including the Tennessee River, Walk, excuse me, the Tennessee River Walk, South Chickamauga Creek Greenway, and the Atlanta Belt Line, among others. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia does hereby allot $50,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Chickamauga Battlefield Multi-Use Connector Trail project. Be it further resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the chairman is authorized to sign an entry license agreement for TPL to conduct trail work on behalf of the county. So resolved and adopted this the 22nd day of December 2022. Commissioner Askew has made a motion to this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion or questions of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is passed by unanimous vote. Thank you all. The next item here is Resolution R-50-22, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to increase the supplement, supplement to compensation for the Walker County State Court Judge. Whereas, OCGA 15-7-22 provides that judges of the state court shall be compensated from county funds and provided by local law. And whereas, OCGA 15-7-22, further states that the county governing authority is authorized to supplement the compensation thus fixed to be paid to the judge of a state court of the county. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas, the state of Georgia approved a $5,000 cost-of-living adjustment COLA in its fiscal 2023 budget for many state employees and elected officials. And whereas, the Walker County State Court Judge did not receive this COLA, and whereas, the county has budgeted for this COLA. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the annual county supplement to compensation paid to the state court judge shall be increased $5,000 effective January 1, 2023. So resolved and adopted the 22nd day of December 2022. The way our guidelines and laws are made up when the state makes pay adjustments through legislation that excludes a few positions, and so the state court judge that we have here tonight and also the state court solicitor, so we did budget for this in our FY23 budget, and what this does is it just keeps them on equal footing with the other constitutional officers and other state-recognized people that got the $5,000. And so it just has to be done through us, through this local body as a resolution. So do we have any additional questions on this?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-50-22?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved unanimously. Okay, this next resolution, again, is very similar, but it's just enough different that I need to read it because it references different OCGA numbers. Resolution R-51-22, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to increase the supplement of compensation for the solicitor general of Walker County State Court. Whereas, OCGA 15-18-67A provides that the solicitor general of the state court shall be compensated from the county funds as provided by local law. And whereas, OCGA 15-18-67B states that the county governing authority is authorized to supplement the minimum compensation to be paid to the solicitor general of the state court of the county as provided by local law, but no solicitor general's compensation or supplement shall be decreased during his or her term of office. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas, the state of Georgia approved a $5,000 cost-of-living raise, or cost-of-living adjustment COLA in fiscal 2023 budget for many state employees and elected officials. And whereas, the solicitor general of Walker County State Court did not receive COLA, and whereas, the county has budgeted for this COLA. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the annual county supplement to compensation paid to the solicitor general of Walker County State Court shall be increased $5,000 effective January 1, 2023. So resolved and adopted the 22nd day of December 2022. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve Resolution R-51-22.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved unanimously as well. Okay, Resolution R-52-22, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to allocate the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Walker County Detention Center. Whereas, on March 1, 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the acronym is ARPA, A-R-P-A, was signed into law by the President of the United States. And whereas, Section 9901 of ARPA amended Title VI of the Social Security Act to add Section 602, which established the Coronavirus State Physical Recovery Fund, and Section 603, which established the Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund. Together, the physical recovery funds, and whereas, the physical recovery funds provide state and local governments with funding to respond to the needs associated with the COVID-19 crisis, including support for isolation or quarantine, and support for prevention, mitigation, or other services in congregate living facilities, including incarcerating, incarceration settings, and whereas, some of the allowable use of the ARPA funds, including needed improvements, to the Walker County Detention Center. Whereas, the Walker County Sheriff requested funding to be allocated to make repairs and upgrades to the Walker County Detention Center. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the Walker County, Georgia, does hereby allocate up to $1 million from the physical recovery funds toward the rehabilitation and renovations of the Walker County Detention Center. So resolved and adopted the 22nd day of December 2022. Myself and also Commissioner Askew has put a lot of time and research and energy into this. Would you like to make some additional comments on this?
Well, I haven't done the legwork that the sheriff and his team have done. I did meet with them and toured the facility, and I wanted to lay eyes on these so-called needed improvements, and I want to just make sure that...
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Robert Wallhour for a term beginning January 1, 2023 and ending on December 31, 2025. Whereas Darrell Brooks, Michael Haney, Gary Miller, and Robert Wallhour are duly qualified to serve as members of the Planning Commission and have expressed the willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointments of Darrell Brooks, Michael Haney, Gary Miller, and Robert Wallhour are approved. Be it further resolved that Michael Haney is appointed to serve as the chairman of the Walker County Planning Commission, so resolved and adopted the 22nd day of December 2022. On this one as well, there's four positions here. I've collaborated with each board member. There is one member out of each of the districts that would be representing Walker County. So we do have a good balance and a cross-section of people from our community. So therefore, I'd like to make the motion that y'all accept these recommendations to serve in these capacity on the Planning Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved. Appreciate these folks all being willing to serve. Okay, the next one was the one that we inserted. Resolution R 55-22. I'll read this one and give a little additional explanation to it. Resolution R 55-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to approve the county's percentage of the local option sales tax proceeds and to authorize the commission chair, chairman, to execute the certificate of distribution and to take any action necessary to the effect of this resolution. Whereas Walker County and the municipalities of Chickamauga, Fort Oathor, Lafayette, Lookout Mount, and Rossville, Georgia, collectively cities, have in its existence an agreement regarding the distribution of the local option sales tax, which is acronym is LOST, proceeds through December 31, 2022. And whereas OCGA Section 48-8-89 requires that the county and the cities to renegotiate the distribution agreement within two years of each delinquent census and to submit new distribution certificates to be received by the Department of Revenue no later than December 30, 2022. And whereas the county and the cities have been negotiating the, can't even talk tonight, excuse me, been negotiating the distribution of the lost proceeds. And whereas the Board of Commissioners agrees to the distribution of the lost proceeds in the amount of 65% to the county and 35% to be divided between the cities. Therefore be it resolved that the Walker County Board of Commissioners approves a distribution of the lost proceeds in the amount of 65% to the county and 35% to be divided between the cities. These distributions percentages are contingent upon the cities also agreeing to the percentages. The distribution percentages shall remain in effect until the effective date of the next statutory renegotiation period, which is currently a 10-year time period, unless the Board of Commissioners agrees to differ distribution percentages prior to the set effective date. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners grants the chairman of the Board of Commissioners the authority to execute the certificate of distribution and to take any other necessary action to carry out the intent and purpose of this resolution. So approved and adopted the 22nd day of December 2022. As it states in this resolution, this comes up once every 10 years. And the percentages have to be negotiated between the cities in the county and determine what the percentages need to be. You'll notice here that we also listed the city of Fort Oathor. There is a portion of Fort Oathor where there's some residential houses. I think there's around 300 or so people, if memory serves me, that live in the city of Fort Oathor, but it's in Walker County. So they get also a share of the lost tax and have been for the last 10 years. So the board has been in collaboration with the cities and working through this and looking at different ways of calculating this. The current agreement that's in place is the county has been receiving 70% and the cities have been receiving a total of 30% that's been allocated to them by population. So with this, the county would be taking 5% less than what they've done over the last 10 years. So this would be increasing the funding distribution to the cities collectively by 5%. And that would be in place for the next 10 years. There is a drop dead deadline by this imposed by the Department of Revenue where this has to be ratified and approved by the county and all the cities no later than close of business December 30. So that's why we're putting this on our agenda here tonight because this is a regular scheduled meeting. Negotiations have been going on even through this week. And so the proposal here and this resolution for this board to consider tonight is the 65% for the county and 35% to be divided between the cities. Any additional comments or statements from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank you and Commissioner Hart for starting the initial negotiations for this. Thank you very much. And I want to thank Commissioner Askew. He worked very hard this week talking with the mayors of our municipalities and doing a great job with that. So just want to thank everyone of y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments or thoughts? Okay, very good. So we do have a resolution here, R 55-22, for this body to approve the loss tax for the next 10 years. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution passes unanimously. Okay, we have amendment to the contract between the Walker County and the probation services for the Walker County State Court. We also had some action on this on our last meeting. Again, this is an amendment to the contract where the Walker County, Georgia and the Georgia Probation Services, Inc., executed an agreement for the probation services dated on November 10, 2022. So that'd been two meetings back. Whereas the issues of the partial monthly payment made by the probationary was not addressed. Therefore, the following paragraph shall be agreed to by all parties and become part of the agreement. Number nine, be notwithstanding the foregoing if the payment received from the probationary is less than a minimum payment of the $110 in a given month, the first 50% of the monthly payment would be allocated to the payment of the Georgia Crimes Victims Fund fee and a probation supervision fees due. The remaining 50% would be allocated to any victims restitution due, and any balances would be paid to the clerk of the court to be distributed and provided by law. So this is an additional paragraph that needed to be added. As you'll see there, the state court judge would also have to agree and assign and consent to this along with the probation services contractor being the Georgia Probation Services, Inc. Any further questions on this? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this amendment to the contract?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this amendment is approved as presented unanimously. Okay, we do have a couple of purchase orders. Going to kind of combine these because they literally go hand in glove. Purchase order 2023-460, the amount of $7,670 for hydraulic thumb for the Walker County landfill, funded from the 2020 splotch. I'll also ask our director Payne Gilli to start working forward so he can speak to this. Purchase order 2023-461, in the amount of $24,710 for a manual wood shear with stay arm for the Walker County landfill, funding from the 2022 splotch allocation. So we do have these two purchase orders. Typically, we would have probably combined this into one purchase order because it's coming from the same vendor. It's all one project. So that would have exceeded the required $25,000 threshold if you put them together. We purposely separated them out because, as you well know, when it comes to availability of parts and material and shipping and everything, that these things may come in at two total different times. And so we wanted to bring this together, but there are two corresponding purchase orders. So I'll let our landfill director Payne Gilli talk about the need for this equipment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Glad to be here. This is a purchase for our inner portion of our facility is where we recycle the trees and brush. And for those of y'all that don't know, we accept trees and brush throughout the year. Then once a year, we'll grind them and then take the ground up mulch and we'll sell that to the public. But we'll also sell it to a recycling factory in Alabama. And it helps us, it's one of our revenue streams. We run into a problem with large diameter pieces of trees, trunks, roots, root balls, things like that, because the grinder can't handle it. And in fact, we actually charge $25 for anything greater than 30 inches because that material in the past would have to be taken and ground up or sheared up and then into smaller pieces so it could pass through the grinder. This gives us the opportunity to do it ourselves at our own, in our own schedule throughout the year, three or four times a year. We received about 200 stumps last year. This year, we're up to 58. These are large pieces. Some of them are as big as a table. We can manage it better than subcontracting it out. And over the course of the years, we'll actually, it'll actually pay for itself. Last year, stump shearing was $15,000. We've got 100, well, we've got probably close to 200 stumps out there now. And that's what we can see. There are even stumps out there that have been buried over the years that need to come out of the ground and be dealt with. If we do that, that will open up more area for us to put trees and brush. Perhaps we won't have to grind as often. But this purchase will help. We can put this on existing equipment. We have to make a few changes. In order to keep our thumb, this is our PC 220, Komatsu PC 220. It's our largest excavator. We use it for work in the transfer station. We use it at the brush pile. We use it to dig cover material at the landfill, even for land clearing. So we need the use of our thumb. The problem is the existing thumb won't work with the shear. So we're going to have to remove the existing thumb, put a new thumb on when we want to use the thumb and bucket. And then whenever we want to use the shear, we'll take the thumb off and install the manual shear. So that's why it's two pieces, two pieces of equipment like this. They do make hydraulic shears, but they're way outside of our budget. I've got, I've got two other prices. They range anywhere from $36,000 to $45,000. So this is the best for the least.
Any questions for Mr. Payne Gilli?
So your trackhoe currently has a thumb on it, right?
Yes.
You'll take it off and put this new thumb on it?
Yes, and this is actually a better thumb. It has just better gripping room on the bucket. It'll cover up to like three-fourths of the opening of the bucket.
Uh huh. But then when you, when you put the shear on, you have to take the bucket off, correct?
And the thumb, yes.
And the thumb.
Yes, sir.
And it's pretty easily interchanged?
Yeah, I mean, it'll take, it's laborious, yes. But we can take, we can do that. We have to, oh, you mean interchange as far as like the existing thumb versus the new thumb?
No, taking the bucket and the thumb off and installing the shear.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's laborious, but it can be done.
Yeah. In the Komatsu, you're putting it on, how old is the machine is it?
About nine years.
That's nine years old. How many hours on it?
About 4,500, 5,000.
When do you look to replace it?
Next five years.
Eight, nine thousand, 10 thousand dollars something?
Yeah, that's how it typically goes, yeah.
Have you, have you seen this, have you seen this demonstrated?
In video.
In video, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no further questions, I think it would be in order if someone wanted to make a motion to include both purchase orders 460 and both, and 461. 460, the amount of $7,670 for the hydraulic thumb. Purchase order 461, for $24,710 for the manual wood shear arm, which both would be funded out of the 2020 splotch budget that was allocated for capital projects and equipment at the landfill. So we have a motion.
So the total price then, I'm adding this up, is 30, I don't know, 32,000? What did it cost us, Payne, you said, to do, to contract it out last year, just alone?
15.
So it's double, it's double cost, so we should pay for itself in two to three, three years probably?
Yes, sir. Yeah. This, you know, we can, we can either pay somebody else or we can do it ourselves.
Another thing I'm looking at, if you replace the machine in four to five years, then you've got this equipment, unless you try to find a machine that this equipment is compatible with.
It'll fit a lot of different pieces. I asked him about that. This is, this is not specifically a Komatsu brand. It's an attachment company that makes attachments for a variety of machines.
So you're confident that in four or five years, when you buy a new machine, we can cut the thumb off? Because it does weld on your arm, correct?
Yeah, it's on the end of the, yeah, the stick, yeah.
Cut the thumb off and keep it for the new machine? And we're confident the machine that you have has a hydraulic capability to operate the?
Yeah, we verified that last week. We've had Komatsu come out and check it. It needs 2,500 PSI.
And then the flow rate's good?
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to pick the power. I'm just asking a question.
Sure.
Have we talked to companies in and around Chattanooga? Or we just went to Illinois or what was the price difference? Or?
Komatsus, you know, they're here in Chattanooga. We also talked Caterpillar locally.
Okay, that's somewhere that says coal strain.
So does Power Equipment have a location here in this region?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is just their building?
Yeah, this is the company that they buy a variety of attachments there.
So you're dealing with their local branch?
Yeah, yeah, over on Bonnie Oaks.
On Bonnie Oaks, okay. So this is just their vendor setup where they want the payment to go to corresponding with the purchase order?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion of the board?
We've looked at this for about three months. I mean, this is not something that we just, you know, looked at in the past couple of days. I mean, I've spent a lot of time talking with different equipment companies, manufacturers. You know, we've looked at the brush pile, how we can work better over there, create the room that we need, you know, deal with the existing stumps that we have and the ones that we don't know about. And this would be a big help.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Blakemore to approve both purchase orders for the equipment requests. Purchase order 2023-460 and purchase order 2023-461. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any additional discussion of the board on these two purchase orders? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase orders are approved as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Payne.
Okay, at this time, we're getting close to the end of our agenda here, so we will go to Commissioner Blake Moore for Commissioner comments.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and being involved in your, and your government feedback is always helpful, and if we can help in any way, call, text, email. Everybody have a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday. Thank you.
Robert hit it on the nail, hit the nail on the head as he always does. Merry Christmas to everybody and happy holidays. Hope your families have a great Christmas and look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Thank you, Commissioner Askew. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, do Merry Christmas to everybody. I want to point out that this weekend is going to be really cold and people may not be out, but if something happens and you call 911, somebody's going to answer the phone. If you call Carter, another tree across the road, he's going to come get the tree out of the road. If you call the sheriff or the fire department, somebody's going to come. So I'm mentioning all that because a lot of your county employees are working this weekend, no matter how cold it is or if it snows or if it's Christmas, they're going to be working. So just remember them, Robert.
Yes, sir. Very good point. So again, wishing everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I want to thank all of our county employees for the job that you've done this year. It's hard to believe that this is the end of the year coming upon us, but thank you for all your hard work. And we all know we have a very severe arctic blast coming in, so check on our elderly residents if you know some and kind of pay attention to your pets and take good care of those and just appreciate anyone coming out tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Just additional, the county offices will be closed Friday for Christmas Eve and also will be closed Monday for Christmas Day. As Commissioner Hart mentioned, we still have a number of our employees that will be working and responding accordingly to the weather. Our emergency management team is actively monitoring the weather situation in conjunctions with our partners at the state with GMA. And so if you have not signed up for the free app on your Android device or iOS device with Apple, please download the Cyrene GPS app on your phone. It's a free download. You can get notifications from the county on any type of important event. Joe Leguie manages that in conjunctions with our 911 center. And so when you download that free app through the Play Store or the iTunes Store, really the only thing you've got to do is select Walker County, Georgia, because this app is used by a lot of municipal and county governments around the country. So just make sure that you select Walker County, Georgia, so you don't get stuff from Walker County, Texas, or Walker, Alabama. So be sure and do Walker County, Georgia. But this also is tied into the National Weather Service, and so if the National Weather Service ever puts out any type of weather alerts or notifications, severe thunderstorms or tornadoes, that passes through our system immediately and we don't even have to human touch that. So it goes out very fast. This being an app, this application can send out responses to tens of thousands of people in just a matter of milliseconds. And so it's a phenomenal technology. It allows us as your local government to be able to push information to you very quickly. So again, for those of you watching at home, that is called Cyrene GPS, all run together, Cyrene GPS. It is a free download, and that's the best way for us to communicate to you. We also will be continuing to post things on our Facebook, but sometimes Facebook can be a little lag because the first critical responses are going to go out on the Cyrene GPS and then go to Facebook. So if you want the information first and fast and also to get the notification where it notifies you, go to the Cyrene GPS. Again, we want to thank all of our employees that will be working through the holidays and their dedication to our public safety. So remember them and keep them in your prayers and so they'll be safe through this holiday season with this arctic blast that's coming through. We do have, that I'm aware of, one item on a personnel issue that we will need to go into executive session. Is there any other matters that, other than personnel, that we would have to go into executive session? Hearing none, I'd like to make the motion then that we adjourn and go into executive session to discuss a personnel item.
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Hopefully, this should be brief and then we'll return to close out the meeting, but we do appreciate everyone coming tonight and everyone watching at home. So everyone, I hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The Board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the Board to consult with a county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting. Otherwise, it is not binding. Thanks for watching, and we'll be back in a bit.
Download Walker County's Cyrene GPS app today for Apple and Android devices and be the first to know about bad weather and other community concerns and interests.
All right, we are back. It's December 22nd, 2022. We just exited our executive session. It's 8:22 PM. There's no further action out of our executive session tonight, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned and Merry Christmas to everyone and everyone be safe.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Good night.